Welcome back, everyone. Welcome you to this part of the meeting. And we're going to do the formal session about, I have to first read this announcement. Honorable members of the City Council, in accordance with Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, Virginia Code 15.2-1413, and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted on September 15, 2020, and Chapter 1289 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly as amended, and by authority vested in me as Mayor of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special meeting by electronic means communication of the Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, February 16, 2021, at 3:00. Ooh, we're going to make that at 6:00. Okay? And then, wish to make comments during the meeting, follow the two-step process. Wait a minute, I got to get back to one other thing here, my apologies. The special meeting by electronic means will be held virtually with the City Council members participating via video/audio conference. The purpose of this special meeting is to allow City Council to hold a regularly scheduled meeting regarding the items listed in the published agenda. If you wish to make comments during the meeting, please follow the two-step process provided below. Register for the WebEx at http://vbgovwebex.com, or to register with the City Clerk by calling 757-385-4303, or via email at abarns@vbgov.com prior to 5:00 p.m. on Friday, the 16th, 2021. The City Council meeting will be streamed on www.vbgov.com and Facebook Live, and will be recorded for rebroadcast on cable TV. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. Okay? At this point, Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call of the City Council members?
Councilmember Abbott?
Present.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Present.
Councilmember Henley?
Present.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Moss?
Present.
Councilmember Rouse?
Present.
Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood? Disconnected for some reason. Mayor Dyer?
Present.
So, 10 to 0. Vice Mayor Wood has, looks like he dropped off, I'm sure he'll rejoin.
Okay, that'll be great. We'll look forward to having him rejoin us. Okay, at this point, Ms. Barnes, would you kindly provide the meeting's structure and instructions?
This is what's happening. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. This is the City Clerk Amanda Barnes. Today's meeting is being conducted electronically and is allowed as described by Mayor Dyer during his reading of the call for special session. Also, please note, this meeting is being recorded. To ensure this live electronic event is successful, please note the following meeting instructions must be followed. Speakers, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing or reverberation. It is important that once your name is called, please wait 2 to 3 seconds to ensure council hear your remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself, and do not ask, "Can you hear me?" as only one feet is open at a time, to minimize the echo or reverberation, and as such, you will not be able to hear a response. Speakers will be recognized in the order which they registered. Please note, if the speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, I will move on to the next registered speaker. Mayor, members of Council, are there any questions about this process? If so, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We originally planned to have a presentation acknowledging Preston Midget, but we're going to defer that to a more appropriate time in the future. Okay? Moving on to a public hearing on the appropriation.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we need approval of the minutes.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, there we go. We will go ahead and do that. I call for a, and I'm going to do all three, would that be okay? Approval of the minutes of, number one, the special session of December 15, 2020, the special session of January 26, 2021, and the special session of February 2, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Councilmember Moss?
So moved for adoption.
Councilmember Tower?
Second.
Okay, at this point, can we have the roll call, please, for the vote?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
I'm sorry, I had technical difficulties, I'm not sure what we're voting on, so I'll abstain.
Vice Mayor Wood?
I'm sorry, I had technical difficulties, I'm not able to hear what we were voting on, so I will abstain.
Thank you. Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved the minutes of December 15, 2020, January 26, 2021, and February 2, 2021.
Okay, thank you. Once again, we're going to respectfully delay our honoring Preston Midget until a more appropriate time in the future. At this point, we will call for the public hearing on the appropriation of pandemic relief reserve funding. Do we have any speakers?
No speakers, sir.
Okay. All right. Is Mr. Wood able to do the consent agenda at this point?
Vice Mayor Wood?
Yes, ma'am, I am. I think I've got the technical difficulty straightened out. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under the consent agenda the following items, under ordinances and resolutions. Item 2, ordinance to declare 2.361-plus or minus acres at 5694 Wesleyan Drive in excess of the city's needs, and authorize the city manager to sell same to Ebenezer Baptist Church Ray overflow parking needs. Item 3, resolution to direct the city manager to create a Virginia Beach Small Business Initiative Division within the Virginia Beach website, Ray outreach and support for small businesses, noting that Mr. Moss, Mayor Dyer, and I are voting nay on that item. Item 4, ordinance to authorize a $5,000 micro grant to Am I My Brothers Keeper, Ray essential life services and assistance to homeless individuals. Item 5, ordinance to convert a part-time position .61 FTE to a full-time position 1.0 FTE, and the office of the city attorney, and authorize a transfer of funds from available appropriations, Ray telecommunication legal services. Item 6, ordinance to accept and appropriate A 72,500 from VB Home Now Incorporated to the FY 2020-2021 Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Operating Budget, Ray Housing Assistance Programs. Item C, 20,000 from Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 2020-2021 Police Department Operating Budget, Ray Southern Virginia Internet Crime Against Children Investigation. Item D, $26,379.68 from Virginia Department of Health to the FY 2020-2021 Emergency Medical Services Operating Budget, Ray Support Rescue Squad Operations and Training. Item E, $150,000 from What Works Cities to FY 2020-2021 Economic Development Operating Budget, Ray Early Childhood Language Development Program. Item F, $74,804 from Virginia Department of Emergency Management to the FY 2020-2021 Emergency Management Operating Budget, and authorize a local match from existing resources of support of COVID-19 vaccinations and health equity initiatives for vulnerable populations. Item 7, ordinance to transfer $800,000 from Debt Service and the General Fund to FY 2020-2021 Voter Registration and Elections Operating Budget, Ray June 2021 Primary Election Expenses. Mr. Mayor, I need you to open a public hearing for planning.
I open a public hearing on planning.
Go ahead and unmute him. Vice Mayor Wood?
Under planning. Item H1, Woodhouse Limited Partnership for a variance of Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, Ray minimum lot width and street line frontage requirements at 1805 Estates Court in Lynnhaven District. Item 2, Boaz Benjamin Brothers for a variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, Ray combine three existing parcels into one lot at 1944 Pleasant Ridge Road in the Princess Anne District. Item 4, Michael and Felicia Giuliano for a street closure, Ray a 7.5 by 50-foot portion of an unimproved alley adjacent 804 Vanderbilt Avenue in the Beach District. Item 5, Five Points LLC for modification of proffers, Ray install drive-through aisle and small retaining wall at 2005 Lynnhaven Parkway in the Rose Hall District. Item 6, St. John the Apostle Catholic Church and School, the Roman Catholic Diocese of Richmond for modification of conditions, Ray religious use in private school at 1968 Sandbridge Road in the Princess Anne District. Item 10, Asia Mitchell Tuzo's Family LP for conditional use permit, Ray Beauty Salon at 4654 Haygood Road, Suite D in the Bayside District. Item 13, Brant Feldman for a conditional use permit, Ray outdoor recreation facility skateboard ramp at 1708 River Road, River Court in Lynnhaven District. Item 14, Janice Hart for conditional use permit, Ray home-based wildlife rehab facility at 1203 Gun Hall in the Princess Anne District. Item 15, Home Depot USA Incorporated for conditional use permits, Ray bulk storage yard and truck and trailer rentals at 2324 Elson Green Avenue in the Princess Anne District. Item 16, City of Virginia Beach ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan, the Virginia Beach Active Transportation Plan 2021, to supersede the Virginia Beach Bike Ways and Trails Plan 2011, and amend Section 2.1, Ray Active Transportation. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Councilmember Moss?
I'll second the motion.
Do the roll call on the vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Moss?
Aye, and I need to make a disclosure statement at the conclusion of the vote.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, noting the nay votes, Mayor Dyer, Councilmember Moss, and Vice Mayor Wood, you have approved the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I need to recognize Mr. Moss, he'd like to read his disclosure statement.
Oh, by all means.
Councilmember Moss?
I'm not going to read the letter in total, the letter I file. I'm disclosing that in my household, including my wife and my daughter and my son, as separate holders, are stockholders in Home Depot. The dividends do not reach the state threshold of 5,000. I feel like I can objectively vote on this item without prejudice, and that letter is on file with the City Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now go forward with the items to be heard. I will read the speaker's policy. I want to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that applies to certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have 3 minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there's any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you, and to assure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for us to all strive for civility and respect. Okay, moving on now to ordinances and resolutions. Number 1, ordinance to appropriate from the fund balance and the general fund, okay, $12.4 million to the United Way of Southampton Roads, Ray small business grants, $350,000 to Parks and Recreation Department, Ray Summer Youth Employee Program, $309,000 to Police Department, Ray Body worn camera program, and $3,518,767 to the City Council Special Pandemic and Vaccine Support Reserve, Ray future unforeseen pandemic expenses. Do we have any speakers?
Mayor, we had one speaker sign up, which was Carl Wright, but he is not on the WebEx, so let me just go through again. He's scrolling down. Mr. Wright is not on the WebEx, so there were no other speakers signed up.
Okay, at this point, may I ask for a motion on item ordinances and resolutions 1?
Councilmember Moss?
Mr. Mayor, I want to move the adoption of this, but I also want to compliment the city manager and the staff, you know, the council was trying to find a way that we could get out from under the CARES Act restrictions, but at the same time, invest a lot of money to go out and help people in need and give those nonprofit organizations flexibility that the federal rules didn't allow us. And I think this is probably one of the most innovative things that we've done to help out people and businesses in need, is how we've given these block grants to the United Way, and then, of course, Mr. Mayor, you had your own micro grant for the Brothers Keeper, so I think everyone here deserves a big round of applause, but certainly, this is helping a lot of people, and we should all, as a community, take great pride that we've been able to sort of like cleanse this money and make it more fungible, to meet more flexibly the needs of our community. I know we all support that, and everybody deserves the credit. Adoption.
Was that a motion? Okay, could we have a second?
Councilmember Rouse?
Seconded motion.
Okay, at this point, could we have the vote on a?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss? Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved ordinance G1.
Okay, moving on, we go to ordinance number 6B, which is $450,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Services to FY 2020 to 2021 Police Department Operating, Ray purchase of software and training and developmental services to assist recruitment and retention of sworn personnel and support criminal justice reform.
Mayor, the only speaker we had signed up on this item as well is Carl Wright, and I have just confirmed and gone through the listing of the attendees, and Mr. Wright is not on.
Okay. At this point, do we have a motion?
Vice Mayor Wood?
Move approval.
Oh, do we have a second?
Councilmember Moss?
Seconded its adoption.
Okay, at this point, could we call the roll for the vote?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved ordinance number 6B.
Okay, moving on to planning. Item number 3, Thomas A. Brown for a variance to Section 4.4 BND of the subdivision regulations, Ray direct access to a public street and street line frontage requirements at 2888 Indian River Road, District 7, Princess Anne.
Mayor, there are no speakers signed up for this item.
Okay, Mrs. Henley, do you have some comments?
Councilmember Henley?
Yes, I do. I'm not sure quite how to proceed without the applicant making a presentation. I think I'm going to ask the, I had asked the city attorney to look at some issues, so he can maybe address this, but we did have a number of people who questioned whether or not the agricultural area and agricultural zoning, and it's being referred to as residential area, if there was some conflict, or if there had been some change. That is just one peripheral thing to talk about with this one, but, and I know that in this area, we have used our policy of recognizing existing lots on another location a little farther down Indian River Road, particularly in Riddick Lane, but this is the first one in this particular place, and I really have a lot of concern about the variance, because in order to do a variance, we are required to find that the authorization of the variance would not be of substantial detriment to the adjacent property, and also that this is not a so general to, of a recurring nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of general regulations. I'm not sure if those apply as they should here, but given the information that we received from adjoining property owners about the severe drainage problems that they're having, and to develop these single-family lots, and I know they're existing parcels, and by right have some usage, but single-family parcels are not, do not undergo the scrutiny and the control for an overall drainage plan that we would otherwise have. So I really have a lot of concerns about this, and Mr. Stiles, if you could address the question about why we even are thinking about allowing this from the legal standpoint of those existing lots, and then, maybe you can help me with the fact that we don't have anyone representing the applicant here, and also whether or not these subdivision regulations requirements apply, or how they apply here.
Mrs. Henley, I will endeavor to answer each of those questions, but if I fail to answer one to your satisfaction, or that of any other member of council, please redirect me, and I will try again. The first question that has been posed, as I understand it, is whether or not residential structures are permissible as a matter of right in agriculturally-zoned land, and the answer to that question is found in Section 401 of the Use Regulations for agriculturally-zoned land, and you see by looking at the table in Section 401, that single-family dwellings are a by right, or as it refers to it in there, a permitted use in Ag 1 and Ag 2 districts. The next question becomes, if residential is permitted by right, what is the density of that residential? And that is found in Section 402 of the city zoning ordinance, and there it provides that the general rule of one residential unit per every 15 acres, but it also explicitly provides, nothing herein shall be construed as prohibiting the by right use of a lot lawfully created on or prior to the effective date of the ordinance, which I believe is in the, it's like 1996 or 1998, for the construction of one single-family dwelling, if it can meet appropriate sewage system requirements, or the requirement, or can connect to city sewer. So, there's been a contention, as I understand it, that the zoning ordinance that I just provided applies only to owners who owned the property at the time this ordinance was amended in the 1990s. That is a misconception, and that is not what the ordinance says, and that's not how zoning ordinances operate. Zoning ordinances apply on a parcel-by-parcel basis, not on a owner-by-owner basis. The more popular way for that to be characterized in language is zoning runs with the land. So, it doesn't matter whether the owner of this property, for purposes of the zoning law and the subdivision ordinance, it doesn't matter whether the owner owned the lot back in the 1990s, or whether they subsequently acquired it, the question is whether or not the lot was created and in existence prior to that ordinance, and if it was, it doesn't matter whether the property transferred by, to an heir, or whether it transfers to some other successor, or purchaser, or assigned. The right to build passed to the subsequent purchaser. There was also a question regarding the application of the AQ's ordinance. The AQ's ordinance applies to discretionary development applications that are presented to and considered by this body. Those discretionary development applications are specifically identified and defined in Section 1803 of your zoning ordinance, and that applies to rezonings, including conditional rezonings, conditional use permits, conversion or enlargement of non-conforming uses or structures, street closures, and special exceptions for alternative compliance. That does not apply to the granting of subdivision variances. So the only question that would, that is applicable here is, for purposes of the AQ's ordinance, is would the granting of this variance for a property that is in the ITA create additional residential development opportunity? And the answer to that question is, there were two lots before, there are two lots now, there were two residential development rights before, if the council grants this, there will still be two, so there is not a net increase in the number of residential development sites, so the approval of this application by the council would not violate either the zoning ordinance or the AQ's ordinance, and so it is within, it is within And so it is within, it is within your discretion if you find that the requirements for a subdivision variance are met. With respect to whether or not those are met, it would be helpful if the applicant was here to help you address the findings that you must make. You may, because the applicant is not here, you may inquire of your zoning staff, or you may make your own determination what's in the write-up. You could also defer if you chose to do so. So the council has discretion on how to proceed on that aspect. I hope that I've answered the questions that you asked, Ms. Henley. But if not, again, please redirect me, and I will endeavor to do so.
Councilmember Henley?
Thank you so much, Mr. Stiles. I think you did a very good job of addressing the questions. And I know that some of these had really just kind of circulated on social media, and I think probably other council members, you know, were getting the emails as well. I would just say that this right to build a single-family home on a property in agricultural zoning has existed in that area before we were a city, before we really had agricultural zoning. And it's, that, those existing rights, which are really the basis of our agricultural reserve program. Back in the 80s, when we were struggling with how we could control the suburban sprawl because we had all of these existing lots that carried with them the right to build an existing house. And we just didn't know how we could control this in any fashion fairly to the property owners. And so that's when we, in the mid 90s, after the current regulations which Mr. Stiles referred to were adopted, and we had tried several different zoning things all during the 80s, and none of them worked. But this last one that was adopted, I believe it was in 94, which sets the, that recognizes those lots at that particular time. And then the agricultural reserve program has really been out there purchasing those existing development rights as a way of controlling the sprawl because that's the only way you can extinguish them and be fair to the property owners. And so it's recognizing those existing development rights that have been a problem for us for a long time. And of course, this is north of that area that is in the Ag Reserve Program. It's zoned agricultural, even though it's not used except unless you call it silver culture. But what we have here is two existing lots, one of them only 10,000 square feet, which did have a house on it, but I believe that's gone now. And then the balance of that, and so today, they do have two existing lots. Whether or not we are going to allow them to reconfigure into two lots that at least have over an acre each, and in that respect conform to our zoning. But then they have other issues that they don't. For example, have any frontage on a, an existing roadway, which I think is an impediment. But of course, there is that existing lane, which has served the house that had been there, and we have recognized those things in the past. So we're kind of in a little dilemma here. But I look at the other questions that have come, particularly the drainage question, and my concern that these two lots, however they are built, are not necessarily one going to have a connection to city sewer, but instead would be septic. And then, given the testimony we have gotten and the letters we have received, or the emails we've received from these adjoining property owners about the extensive amounts of money that they've had to spend on their backyards to address the drainage. And if we're continuing to just develop as individual lots, as I said, we're not getting that drainage, stormwater work that we need. And so I'm thinking that we might need to defer this and ask staff to look at this particular area. We've got a hodgepodge of lots here. And how are we going to deal with this, recognizing what is there? I think also we have this residual right-of-way for what was going to be the West Neck Parkway through there, which I'm assuming the city owns. And, but now that road is not going to be built in that particular place. So I think there are a lot of issues here that need to be looked at, and I'm going to stop talking and let my colleagues who have questions, ask your questions. But I am just not comfortable in moving forward with anything at this particular location until we really have a better idea for how all of it is going to be served together.
Mrs. Henley, is that a motion for a deferral?
Well, I'd like to really hear what my colleagues are thinking, and then I'll make the motion, if it's okay to have that discussion.
Fine. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abbott, and then Councilmember Moss. Councilmember Abbott, if you'd just pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Councilwoman Henley. I think you said it very concisely. I have similar concerns. I drove out to the property to kind of really view it in its, in its real time. And one of the questions I had had for staff, because I, like you, and I'm sure almost all of us received the various emails about the property. And one of the things that wasn't really clear to me in the packet, and one of the things that I asked staff about was whether or not city water and electric, or whether there were city utilities going to the property, and that was unclear. And when I asked about the potential for taking trees down or deforestation in any large amount, I couldn't, wasn't really able, they weren't able to give a clear, they weren't able to give me a clear answer on it because of not knowing whether, what utilities will be necessary. And also, we don't have a layout for how these houses are going to exist on the, on the property if reconfigured with these two lots. And I thought that was unusual because, and maybe it's not a requirement with this specific type of application, but in other applications where we've had these conditional use permits, we've seen the layout of how the houses are going to look and can kind of deduce what has to adjust. So I am concerned about what Councilwoman Henley shared, as well as, I would like to know how the houses will be positioned if there'll be significant tree removal. Although this area isn't in a flood hazard zone, it does, I think, serve a greater purpose. There's a lot of trees in this area, and I think we need to be really mindful of what the long-term implications, especially for a residential neighborhood immediately in its area, what that means, because I don't think it's unreasonable to think that that area isn't serving a greater purpose when it comes to flood control. And I do think we really need to look hard at what exactly will happen when we grant this variance. And then I had a question for staff. As the lots are configured today, would they be able to build two houses? Or is the way that the lots are configured, they could only build one house because that one lot is so small?
Mr. Tahan, if you would just pause two to three seconds. You are unmuted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Abbott, the 10,000-square-foot lot itself was created by deed, so it was not, that was the property that had the existing residence on it for many years. And so because that was created by deed after the requirement of the need for a plat, they would still need a subdivision variance just to recognize the existing lot, which has been done a number of times previously by the council to recognize lots that were created by deed and then sold by, sold to separate owners. This, the property owner that owns it now did not own it, own all the properties together until recently, which is why it's requesting the subdivision variance now to create more, two more consistent lots. So short answer is, is that it still would require a subdivision variance, however, it's one that was, this lot did have the previous residence on it, and so that would go into the report of what the recommendation from staff is.
Councilmember Abbott, did you have any additional questions or comments?
I did. In short, then, Mr. Tahan, as it stands right now, without council action, they could not put two houses on the two lots. They would need some kind of, some kind of action by our body in order to be able to build two houses, correct?
Mr. Tahan, if you would pause two to three seconds.
Thank you. I may have to defer to Mr. Stiles, but technically, because that lot was not created appropriately, there, there is a need for a subdivision variance to at least recognize the existing lot.
I would, I would simply add that the second lot, which has never had a house on it to date, would be developable by right unless there's some issue of which Mr. Tahan is aware that I am not, and that the fact that there was a house already on the lot created by deed rather than by plat complicates the issue so that a definitive answer is hard to provide. But I follow the lead as described by Mr. Tahan with respect to the 10,000-square-foot lot.
Councilmember Abbott, did you have any additional questions or comments?
I didn't. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Moss, if you'd just pause two to three seconds.
Yes, I want to follow up on both, build on this Henley's thought process and amplify on Councilwoman Abbott's view. If you're looking at the cover page of this application, and you look at item D there at the top, it talks about the variance. It says, "Personal or self-inflicted hardship shall not be considered as grounds for the issuance of a variance." And then, of course, the leading paragraph, and I'll come and build on that in a moment, says the applicant is proposing to reconfigure the property lines of the two parcels, one which was created improperly by deed in 1961 rather than by plat. Well, I'm sure when the people acquired this property, they did due diligence, they got title insurance, they had full knowledge of all the encumbrances of this property. So whatever conditions it has by the owner were assumed by the owner, and therefore, everything here now is self-inflicted. And it's personal. It's not, this is not the original owner. All this stuff they've inherited and knew and acquired it, and should have had full knowledge, and we can hold them accountable for full knowledge. So it is self-inflicted. So following up on, I think Mrs. Abbott's view is that they're not entitled, and by this self-inflicted, we shouldn't grant the variance by this because it is self-inflicted. And they would not, I don't believe, be able to develop parcel A. I think I got that right, the smaller parcel. But they could do the larger one, but we aren't even entitled to grant them access to a street or give them a variance from that. Because once again, they know that they didn't have access to the street when he acquired the property, and it wasn't properly plotted. So I'm not even sure that we, unless they can have access another way, that we have.
Okay. Love some.
Councilmember Moss, we have lost your audio. Mayor Wilson?
Yeah.
Happy to defer it, but I will not vote for it when it comes up. We should have at most one house on the two parcels, and the variance should not be granted. Thank you.
Councilmember Moss, I apologize for having to do this, but we lost you several, probably about a minute or so at the end of your comments. I heard you would, you would support a deferral. Just want to confirm, please.
Can you, I support a deferral, but I will not vote for the application when it comes back. The variance is, should not be granted. There is no demonstration of a non-self-inflicted, non-voluntarily-acquired hardship, and therefore, it should be denied.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I just wanted to say, since there's no representation here on the applicant, I think a deferral would be in order.
Councilmember Henley?
Yes, then my recommendation is going to be for an indefinite deferral, asking the staff to look at this area with these questions, as I had outlined them, with the West Neck Parkway properties, with the other vacant properties in that area, with the drainage in that area. And I think if I'm looking really well and my eyes are good, the other, the same property owner owns the property just to the south, so I'm not sure what's going on there. But, but because these are existing lots, this issue is not going to go away. And I think it's very important that we get a, an analysis of this area and what could be done. And I know the staff has a lot to do, but I would really like a good, strong staff analysis of all of these questions and an indefinite deferral until they're ready to bring it back. And that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Councilmember Abbott?
I would like to second Councilwoman Henley's motion. I'd also like to add that I think that this application brings to light another issue that we're going to be facing more and more, and that is our policy on tree removal and private property development. And I think we really need to, at a later date, Mr. Mayor, set some time aside for council discussion on how we want to handle that, especially in these parts of our city where, that have large forests. And I know I'm not the only one who's concerned about deforestation in our community. So I would just like to say that if we could set some time aside to have a greater policy discussion about that in the future, I'd appreciate it. But I second Councilwoman Henley's motion. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And yes, Council Lady Abbott, we will schedule a workshop for a discussion on that in terms of an item. Okay, motion and a second. Can we have the roll call for the vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheaton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, the application of Thomas A. Brown has been deferred indefinitely.
Okay, moving on to planning, item seven. Wilson, R. Balance, Jr., for a conditional zoning of Ag Two Agriculture District to conditional five, R Five D Residential District, Ray, create two single-family building lots at 621 Dam Neck Road, District Seven, Princess Anne.
Mayor, the applicant's representative is Eddie Burdon. However, they only had one other speaker sign up, who was Brad Lorimer, who was opposed. But he is not on WebEx. We have checked and double-checked, so.
Okay, is, does Mr. Burdon want to speak?
Eddie, Mr. Burdon, you are unmuted. If you would begin.
Vice Mayor Ms. Barnes? Again, this is Eddie Burdon, representing the applicant, Mr. Balance. This, I'll give you just a brief rundown. I, I believe this is probably something that would have been on consent, but for Ms., for the person that signed up to speak, we didn't have any opposition up until now. This is a 40,000-square-foot lot on the south side of Dam Neck Road, zoned agriculture. That's surrounded by a development to the west that's at a density of 3.7 units per acre, condos that are 12 units to the acre that are a part of the Ocean Lake Pud. That is six units per acre. It's in the 70 dB noise zone. It's less dense than the development around it. It's not a suitable property for agricultural use. And we have got two single-family homes on two lots that are basically 20,000 square feet each. It's not a variance. It's a conditional proffered rezoning. The houses will be set back in line with the houses adjacent to the west. The old house that's been there for decades is only about less than 20 feet from Dam Neck Road. Obviously, damn. Obviously, Dam Neck Road's been widened since that house was built. So it's a very reasonable infill development. It'll be in keeping with what's adjacent to it. And again, staff had recommended approval of it. We knew of no opposition, had heard of no opposition, and your planning commission made a unanimous recommendation to approve it, subject to, as I stated, the proffers that dictate the way the property will be developed and the two homes that'll be developed on it. I'll be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon?
Councilmember Henley?
Mr. Burdon, I do have a question, just to clarify with Mr. Burdon. It's my understanding, if I'm reading this correctly, that there's going to be a shared driveway with these two lots, so that there's only still going to be one access from Dam Neck Road. Is that correct?
Mr. Burdon?
Yes, ma'am, that is absolutely correct. I apologize for not having mentioned that. That was in my longer presentation before I got told that there was no opposition now. But yes, ma'am, one access only. And I also want to say off the subject, but I really appreciated your recital of some of the history of the ARP program, which I thought was spot-on and very, it's always good to have people understand what all has gone into that over many, many decades. And I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Councilmember Henley?
Okay. We also did have one email or one letter attached to the agenda questioning the, you know, having more traffic on Dam Neck, but I think this shared driveway addresses that. And I think Mr. Burdon did a good job of showing that the zoning is not nearly as dense as the other zoning in the area and is certainly appropriate for this infill property, and I'll move approval.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Councilmember Moss?
Second the motion.
Did he say he supported it? Second, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If we can call the roll for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the application of Wilson R. Balance.
Okay, moving forward to planning item eight. Old Dam Neck LLC, Francis G. Willis, William E. Gilbert, Bonnie J. Garrett, Catherine D. Meredith, and John J. Weinbrecht Jr. for a conditional change of zoning from AG2 Agricultural District to a conditional B2 Community Business District and a conditional use permit, Ray Mini Storage, at 1081, 1087, 1089 Old Dam Neck Road and an adjacent parcel west of 1087 Old Dam Neck Road, District 7, Princess Anne.
The applicant's representative is Eddie Burdon. Mr. Burdon, if you'd just pause two to three seconds for beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and Honorable Members of City Council. I'm Eddie Burdon. I'm Virginia Beach Attorney, and I'm representing the applicants on this conditional rezoning application and conditional use permit request. This is an assemblage of four parcels, really three parcels totaling 4.46 acres, fronting on General Booth Boulevard between the Dam Neck Crossing Shopping Center and a tire store to our north on the corner of Dam Neck and General Booth. And it is across the street, across General Booth Boulevard, from a large Food Lion-anchored shopping center as well. The property is zoned AG2. The property is not really an agricultural property in this location, obviously, and the property is also in the 70, 75 DBN high noise zone. The proposal is 100% consistent with the ACU's guidance for this area. Access to the proposed development will be through the Dam Neck Crossing Shopping Center, which the applicant has pursued for a considerable amount of time at a considerable expense, because the prior rezoning of the Dam Neck Crossing Shopping Center in the late 80s was conditioned upon their providing access to these properties. That did not happen. There was a note placed on a plat of the property adjacent to the south that said that they would, but that's not the same thing as a proffer that says that. And back in those days, that wasn't something that, that was right on the cusp of when you could start proffering. So the access has been obtained. We actually have the signed easement, so there will be no additional curb cut to General Booth Boulevard. There is no access at all, or will be no access at all, to this development from the business on this property from Old Dam Neck Road. The, we've spent many, many months with the city staff, not as long as some, proving that we will be able to meet the requirements of the city's new stormwater management policy on this property. The proposal is a very attractive, well-landscaped self-storage facility and a building that looks like a, you know, an office building. The stormwater BMP is to the west of the building. The entire site will be, the east, the east and north sides of the property, the building will, there will not be a fence in front of the building along General Booth, but it'll be fenced in with an attractive wrought iron-style fence landscaped on the outside all the way around. The four proffers guarantee the development being in this manner. There are also three staff-recommended conditions. This is a low-traffic generating, quiet use. It is coming to you with the recommendation from your professional staff for approval as well as a unanimous planning commission recommendation for approval. And again, we were not aware of, there was no opposition at, the planning commission and not aware of any opposition. I guess there is a speaker signed up to speak tonight, so I would stand by for questions and respectfully request the opportunity to speak in response to whatever opposition may be present. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon?
Councilmember Moss and Councilmember Jones, your virtual hands are raised. Mr. Moss, you are unmuted. If you have questions or comments for Mr. Burdon? Councilmember Jones, did you have questions or comments for Mr. Burdon?
No, I didn't realize my hand was raised.
Councilmember Tower, did you have questions or comments for Mr. Burdon?
I have questions and perhaps comments, but is there another speaker? I'd like to hear from any other speakers or ask and answer my questions.
Yes, Councilmember Tower, we have additional speakers. This was only for asking questions or comments to Mr. Burdon. So we'll move on to the speaker signed up, Charles Slade, or Sledge, I'm assuming. You are unmuted. If you'll pause two to three seconds, thank you.
I don't have a microphone.
We can hear you fine, sir. Mr. Sledge, if you'd like to begin your comments?
I would really like to, ladies.
You, sir. Carol Holden, is she there? Ms. Holden, if you'd like, just pause two to three seconds. Thank you. Ms. Holden, if you would pause two to three seconds and go ahead and begin your comments?
Yes, I have some questions. I don't know if you can hear me. I can't hear you right now.
This is for comments, so if you would like to begin your comments, go ahead and do so. We can hear you fine. Thank you. If you would begin your comments, please. Thank you. We're going to go back to Mr. Sledge. Mr. Sledge, if, you are unmuted. If you will begin your comments?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Sledge, we can hear you. Please begin with your comments.
At one point, and it looks like it may have changed, there was supposedly a excess of Old Dam Neck Road apartment that was going to, called grass paved, which will not, but it looks like that excess is gone. The other.
There's a problem with your microphone. I'm not sure what that noise was. We'll unmute you again and see if you can begin again. Thank you.
All right, we'll try again. The pond prevent it from becoming.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sledge. We're unable to hear you. Let's try Ms. Holden again. Carol Holden, if you would pause two to three seconds, you are unmuted.
Hello?
Begin your comments. We can hear you fine. Thank you.
I don't know why.
Mayor, there's obviously some problems there on their end. I don't believe it's, I'm not sure what's happening.
I think regrettably, we have to move forward. Okay, is there any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. Mrs. Henley, are you willing to make a motion or anything you would like to discuss at this point?
Councilmember Henley?
Well, I would really like to have heard the concerns of these people. Unfortunately, I guess they did not present at the planning commission and have not contacted me in the interim, and I would love to be able to talk with them. It sounded as if the first gentleman was concerned about whether there was going to be access to Old Dam Neck Road, and there will not be. And I think that is probably one of the strongest things in favor of this particular application. It's very close to the Dam Neck intersection, so it's certainly potential commercial. It's certainly not agricultural. And there will be no access from either General Booth or Old Dam Neck Road or any of that housing in the rear to this property. The access will be from the existing shopping center, and I think that is a strong plus. I know it's a very, very, very large building, and that is a little bit not in character with the area out there to have a building this tall. But sometimes we do have to make trade-offs. And I think the fact that this is a very low-intensity traffic generator, and it will not have any direct access from General Booth or Old Dam Neck, is about as strong a thing that we could have in its favor for that area. As far as that pond in the back, and it sounded like maybe the gentleman was going to have some questions about that, this is a very large BMP. And I think the very fact that it is going to be treating not only the water from quantity and quality, but also quality, is very important. And the fact that they have followed all of our new requirements, given the size of this building, including one and a half feet of sea level rise capability, I think are also very strong. And so, given those facts and the recommendations from the planning staff and planning commission, my recommendation is approval.
Okay, we have a motion and an, you know, for approval. Do we have a second?
Councilmember Tower? Councilmember Moss?
I'll second Mrs. Henley's motion. I do agree. It's a question to trade off, and I think it's a good.
Is there any other discussion?
Councilmember Tower?
Thank you. I realize this is a proper use for this property, but my main concern is, with all due respect to Mr. Burdon, I don't think this is going to look like an office building. I think it looks like exactly what it is. It's a very nicely-done mini warehouse. People have seen these in other places before. But the size of this building is enormous. It is 169,000 square feet, if I'm reading properly, and it is flush up against General Booth Boulevard, which is of concern to me. And I'm just expressed the concern. I realize that probably the sighting of the building was done in order to get maximum respect for the people on the other side of the property, including some residential properties. And so there were probably fewer choices than the developer would like. But I'm not sure it had to be this size. This is, this is a really, really large building. And I don't think, I think it is going to be very, very noticeable driving up and down General Booth Boulevard. I don't think there's anything like it. So I have some concern about it. That's all I can say.
Okay, anybody else?
Any additional discussion? Councilmember Moss, I note your virtual hand is still raised. And Councilmember Tower, if you don't have any additional comments, then lower your hands, please. Councilmember Moss, you are unmuted. If you have additional comments?
I do, I share Mr. Tower's view about putting buildings so close to the street. I didn't support that from the start. And we can see it with the Walmart of Virginia Beach Boulevard. You can go all the places. I don't think it's achieved the aesthetic purposes. And maybe when we look at the comp plan, we can revisit the reality versus what the promise was. But since that is the current standard that we allow relative to the BMP, I'd rather have the building close and the BMP behind. But I don't disagree. It's a large, you know, wall, so to speak, on the Boulevard. And I guess the best thing it might be is a sound barrier. But in light of the, that we allow that to be so close to the street, I still think it's the best of the trade-offs, but I look forward to a discussion about our policy of allowing buildings to only be 10 feet off the street. I think that was a big mistake. It was another social engineering approach to pedestrian that hasn't generated that benefit. Thank you.
Any additional comments or discussion from council members? Mayor, there is a motion to approve with a second.
Yes, and let me just say, you know, I think this is an ambitious project, but given the BMP, what's going on there and the location, I think you can find a more appropriate location. Yes, it is close to a sidewalk, but once again, you know, we see a lot of these type facilities are functional. And, you know, I agree that for, in terms of the trade-off, I think this is appropriate. Okay, Madam Clerk, at this point, can we call for the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci? Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss? House?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you have approved the application of Old Dam Neck LLC.
Okay, moving on to Planning Item 9, William T. and Carolyn Dale Weems for a conditional use permit rate outdoor recreation facility at 1420 Claudia Drive, District 4, Bayside.
The applicant, Ms. Carolyn Weems, Ms. Weems, you are unmuted. If you would pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Woods, and City Council members. My name is Carolyn Weems, and I, along with my husband Billy and granddaughter Bryland, live at 1420 Claudia Drive in the Bayside neighborhood of Lakeview Park. We appreciate your time this evening and hope you will agree with us and the Planning Commission to approve our request for a special recreational use permit. We would like to thank Councilman Jones and the members of the Planning Commission who came to our home to take a look at our play area. Thankfully, we have been able to clear up a lot of misinformation for many in our neighborhood and for the commissioners. Since this request has been discussed at length, and since you all have the documentation in your packets, I will not belabor the details here tonight. But for some of you who may not be as familiar with baseball, I would like to explain what actually goes on at 1420 Claudia Drive. At the very back end of our secluded two-acre yard, hidden behind trees, is a strip of dirt, a portable net also used for soccer, a ball machine, and three down lights. These are not floodlights. The ball machine releases a yellow rubber ball that is aimed at the ground, thus rolling the balls. There is no pitching, no hitting, no batting. This is not a batting cage, although there are two in our neighborhood. The rolling ball is scooped up and tossed into a net about five to 10 feet away. We set this area up 24 years ago when our family of five children moved into this wonderful neighborhood. Let me repeat that, 24 years ago. Our son Beamer and his friends loved to play baseball and wanted to be the best shortstops in the area. They needed to practice their skills outside of school and team practices. In 24 years, we have not received one complaint, not one complaint about noise, about baseball, about kids, about lights, about traffic, about car parked cars, about visitors at our home. 24 years and not one single complaint, until now. If you are not a family member or a close friend, you would never even know this play area exists. Again, we don't want to change anything, add anything, extend, build on to. We don't want to change anything that hasn't already been here for two and a half decades. This ground ball area is at the very back of our private secluded property. It provides a safe, fun place to practice ground balls, operate remote-controlled cars, play hopscotch, and even houses our granddaughter's girls-only clubhouse. We would like to continue to be able to use and enjoy this part of our yard. In closing, I would like to direct your attention to the eight letters of support in your packet. Four coming from owners and longtime renters who have lived or live on Claudia Drive, the gravel dead-end road that leads to the front of our property, and a couple from neighbors that potentially have the most impact, as they live on Lakeside Road, and their backyard backs up to this particular area. We love our neighborhood, and we hope that your vote of approval will help provide a peaceful resolution so that we, our neighbors, and the kids can move on and feel good about the outcome. We thank you so much for your time this evening.
Any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor, one additional speaker. Zachary Holshausen, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Zachary Holshausen. I live at 4921 Collin Road in Virginia Beach. I'd like to be clear that this has nothing to do with playdates in the backyard or normal family gatherings. We understand that Carolyn Weems was able to gather statements from various people stating that they have no problem with the steady schedule of organized lessons and events that are hosted at the Weems residence. However, we would observe that the zoning laws weren't written for people who are willing to put up with or who aren't affected by the traffic disruption of these non-residential activities. Rather, the zoning laws were written to protect the rights and interests of all the residents and tax-paying citizens of the neighborhood, and specifically to protect the rights of the people who do have a problem with the activities outside the norm for the residential area where they've chosen to make their home. Our property is adjacent to 1420 Claudia Drive. The approval of this conditional use permit will negatively impact us and has negatively impacted us over the course of the past 12 years. We've repeatedly addressed this with the Weems with no resolution. This conditional use permit would also negatively impact any future owner of this property. We and many of our neighbors are opposed to this conditional use request, and we would simply like to see the code enforced as written. Thank you again for your time.
Ms. Weems, we will unmute you. You have three minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, thank you. I am frustrated and disappointed that we couldn't solve this on our own and waste your time, City Council, but it is what it is. As far as the traffic, there's been assumptions or misinformation saying that there's so much traffic down this little dead-end gravel road, and that UPS trucks have been blocked. We're the only driveway down here. UPS deliveries have never been blocked. Once we got word of this.
Ms. Weems? We've lost audio with Ms. Weems. She's still showing, but we've lost her audio.
Okay, you know, maybe we can, you know, think, but at this point, you know, Mr. Jones, any recommendation or discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I've visited this piece of property numerous times over the years. I'm familiar with the recreational item that they have in their backyard. It's way back off of Claudia Drive. It backs up to those houses that are behind it, and those people have not ever expressed any opposition to it. In fact, they've supported it. They have letters of support for it. The issue that really seemed to be the one that the whole house and a couple had was in regards to the parking on Claudia Drive itself. Mr. and Ms. Weems have agreed to require the people who come to their property, which is a very sizable piece of property, has a lot of parking on it, availability on it, to require those people to park on their property off of the street. It's a family-friendly type activity. It's, you know, quite frankly, the kind of thing that has led to a lot of young people having a clean-cut recreational opportunity there in the neighborhood. And because of the fact that the Weems have agreed to the term that they would have all of the parking on their property itself, I really think that it's the right thing to do to grant them this permit, so I'm going to move approval.
Councilmember Moss?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Okay, at this point, Madam Clerk, we call the roll for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you approve the application of William T. and Carolyn Dale Weems.
Okay, moving on to next Planning Item 11, Expert Services LLC, VB Investments LLC for conditional use permit per car wash facility at 4937 Broad Street, District 4, in Bayside. There has been a request for a deferral, but I understand a speaker signed up.
So, we'll call the applicants representative first. Eddie Bourdon, you are unmuted. If you would just pause two to three seconds.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. As councils are aware, we made a request to defer this item to the 16th of March, and the civic, a couple Civic League representatives were going to meet with my client on Saturday at the property. They've been talking since the Planning Commission, but they've been made, we were made, they were made aware, excuse me, of this request, and the weather was so bad, they postponed that meeting on Saturday. We have, you know, done some outreach to the community to hopefully have them gain a better understanding that this isn't a car wash facility, even though that's technically what the ordinance calls it. It's using the house to simply hand wash one vehicle at a time behind the house and have a car being detailed in the garage, which again enters from the back of the house. But I don't want to waste the council's time with this this evening. I'm not sure who the person signed up to speak, but we did let the Civic League know, and we think that we, the deferral will, with COVID, it's just, it's much more difficult to get a group of people together. And that sign that says "car wash facility," we believe, from talking to people in the neighborhood, has caused some misunderstanding about what this really is. And I think the time will at least help to get the information out, may or may not keep there from being opposition, but we'd appreciate some additional time to try to, you know, see if we can gain better understanding among all parties. Thank you.
The only other speaker that signed up is Joey Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher, if you would please pause two to three seconds before beginning. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bourdon. My name's Joey Fletcher. I represent the property owner that surrounds all three sides of this proposed facility. I just want to make it clear, I'm opposed to this as planned, only with a request for some modifications. I did attend the planning meeting. However, I was unable to be called, whether that was my own fault for not following procedure or perhaps not being seen. So, I haven't been able to express my actual concerns here. But if this is the appropriate forum, to do so, I would like to express my modifications to this as planned.
Mr. Fletcher, the request at the moment is to defer this item until March the 16th.
I just.
If you would like to go ahead and make your comments, feel free.
Do that. First of all, AG and G, the folks leasing this property are our neighbors and friends, and, you know, we have no issue. We understand their need for this facility. However, as the property owner on all three sides, I do have a couple of concerns. No specific order, but there is an access road/paper street, which was the remnants of Opal Avenue before these properties were developed, that we own 50% of. I understand that that is their access point to get the vehicles to the rear of this building. Let's see, if you're trying to get to the page, yeah, just to the left side of your blue bar there, that's the remnants of Opal Street. And if you, while we're on this slide, the grass lot to the right, we own, to the bottom of this slide, that is Cycle World. We own all of that property. To the left of your blue box is Volvo of Virginia Beach. We own all of that property. This is a good slide to leave up if you don't mind. So, you know, we need zero obstruction of our property or any portion of Opal Avenue, which is their rightful access as well. But we just want to make sure that there's never any obstruction to access on that paper street. We also request if they would like to hand wash the cars to the rear of the building, which is said to be a gravel lot, we have some concerns over washing of vehicles there. You will see to the bottom of the blue box, that is my paved lot where I have storage of vehicles in for service. They're my customers' vehicles. They're not Cycle World vehicles. And I'm concerned that sediment, chemicals, and water will run off onto my property there. That has not been used as a washing facility in the past. My request is simply to have it either graded, so runoff runs away, or paved and drained. You can, in this picture, you can actually see where it looks as if the grade does go to the right towards Cycle World on the picture on the right. That's the back of my service department on the right-hand side of the right-hand picture. And to the left, you see the remnants of Opal Avenue, which is the road we'd like to have not obstructed at any time, although we understand that they need to have their vehicles in and out through a gate, which is at the end of Opal Avenue behind that home. Additionally, if we can go back to the slide that showed, there you go, we've requested a fence and hedge buffer be placed between the building and Cycle World. You can see a large hedge and fence buffer behind Volvo at Virginia Beach, which is to the left of the blue box, that we were required to install between us and our neighbors there. So, we would like the hedge and buffer that's proposed for the front of that facility to also be installed at the rear of that facility to buffer us from that location. Additionally, just man, I would like to know that there's a way to monitor and enforce the street parking that would occur with the number of vehicles on and off of this facility. I understand that that's going to be necessary for employees and perhaps for cars and storage. But that sums up my concerns, and I'm happy to attend the meeting that's deferred, as well as the future City Council meeting, but is that sufficient to note my concerns?
Mr. Bourdon, would you like, you have three minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes, and thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I would be very happy to speak with you, meet with you, and go over your concerns. I'll just point out a couple of things. At one point, you characterized A and G as a tenant. I think that was a slip of the tongue. They're the owners of the property. With regard to Opal, you know, your comments are very reasonable. I would point out to you, and we can talk about this later, half of the street's actually on my client's property. The way it's paved, it's not in the middle of the right-of-way, but your comments about the street and owning the half of it, et cetera, in terms of if it's ever closed, I understand all of that. We won't have any disagreement on that issue. The conditions, however, so that you're, it's clear, preclude any parking in that street or on Broad Street, and limit us to no more than four vehicles, period, on the property, including, you know, an employee vehicle. There'll only be two people there, sometimes one, but typically, there'll be two during the hours of the, of operation. Your comments about the rear and the stormwater are 100% appropriate. There will have to be a site plan. There will have to be a BMP. All of that will take place, but again, very reasonable comment. This is a B2 property, just as your adjacent property is a B2 property, and frankly, there isn't a requirement for doing a buffer between B2 and B2 where you could actually build two buildings that are, you know, directly adjacent to each other with a zero setback. So, the fencing of it is no issue whatsoever, but I don't know that we're going to be doing going to be doing a hedge on the back of the property. We will be planning a bunch of landscaping in the front of the property where there is already a parking lot, but that parking lot, we agreed, would not be used, and there would be only behind the building and no more than four vehicles, period, at any time on the property, none can park in the right-of-way. With that, I'm sorry to, you know, to go on and, I think council will grant the request, so I will stand down, but I'd love to talk to you, Mr. Fletcher, at any point in time, be happy to meet with you. Thank you.
Okay, do we need a vote on a deferral? Okay. At this point, Mr. Jones, would you, can you make a motion?
Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've moved to defer to May 16th with the comment that I'd asked Mr. Burdon to be sure, get together with Mr. Fletcher, and, and I'm sure he will, to address the concerns that he's expressed. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Councilmember Wilson.
Any means of March 16th?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Moss.
Mr. Jones is going to correct the Mark 16th, and I'm voting aye to that date.
Councilmember Rouse. Councilmember Tower.
I believe Mr. Rouse was in the middle of making a comment.
Let's, we need to fin, can we finish?
Finish the roll.
Finish the roll, I need to finish the vote, and then I'll come back to Mr. Rouse, go ahead and mute him. Councilmember Tower.
I'm voting yes, assuming that the date was intended to be March 16th and not May 16th.
The request is for March the 16th.
Yes, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes, the, the requests that, that received in the packets were for March the 16th. Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, this item for Expert Services LLC has been deferred to March 16th, 2021.
Okay, our final planning item, 12, Verdad Real Estate and Construction and SRGS LLC, Penny R. Pitts Revocable Living Trust, and Adams Outdoor Limited Partnership for a Conditional Use Permit, Ray Automobile Service Station at 4493 Shore Drive, District 4, Bayside.
The applicant is the first speaker, Grady Palmer. Mr. Palmer, if you would pause two to three seconds before, before beginning, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor, members of city council and staff. My name is Grady Palmer, I'm an attorney, represent Verdad Construction and 7-Eleven. I'm here tonight with Jeremy Yee from Kimble Horn, who can answer any questions that you might have regarding engineering and design. I want to thank the city staff for the recommendation for approval and, and the process that we went through with them to develop the plan that's before you tonight. This is a proposed new state-of-the-art 7-Eleven at Shore Drive and Greenwell Road intersection. I'll note, just in, in the staff report, it certainly wasn't around then, but in 199, apparently in 1996, a use permit was approved for an auto service station, as long as I've been going up and down Shore Drive, it's been a, a used car lot and an auto wash facility, but it does say that that was approved in, in your staff report. We spent several months at the Bayfront Advisory Commission and finally got a unanimous recommendation for approval from the VAC, and in addition, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. We've worked, we've, we have worked really hard to come up with a good redevelopment plan for this corner. As most of you know, it has been a used car lot and a car wash for many years. The site is almost entirely covered in concrete. This proposal would dramatically increase the amount of, amount of pervious surfaces and would reduce the access points from four to two, one on Shore Drive and one on Greenwell. So we've done a couple of things, so, which I think is important to note, that this is a conditional use permit process, a lot of other byright uses in the B2 zoning district that would be available to the owners to redevelop the site, but I think that this is a good example of using the conditional use permit process to, one, create a good compatible development with the Shore Drive community. Like I said, we went to the Bay, Bayfront Advisory Commission, unanimous recommendation for approval. But I think, secondly, and maybe more importantly, is it helps create, the process helps create a compatible, or at least a more compatible, development with our immediate neighbors. I know you'll probably hear from Ms. Jimenez tonight about her concerns, I'm certainly sensitive to those. So a couple of things that we've done in the conditional use permits, we were requested to increase the size of the fence from six to eight, and so the conditional use permit site plan that you see right now has a, has, has an eight-foot fence to create, to create a little bit more of a privacy buffer to our neighbors to the south. We've really landscaped the, the site well, I think you can see the site plan with all the landscaping, the berming. There are considerable building elevation commitments that we have to, to create a, what I think to be a very, very attractive 7-Eleven store, lots of pedestrian connectivity, it even has a, an outdoor seating area that connects directly to the sidewalk on Shore Drive to promote pedestrian connectivity. So all, all of those things are, you know, attempts to make a development or a redevelopment, in this case, much more compatible with our neighbors in the community, and we think this is a much better, much better outcome than, than byright commercial development. Shore Drive carries a lot of traffic, our traffic study indicated 36,000 vehicles per day, travel up and down Shore Drive. Obviously, a 7-Eleven is, is a good fit for Shore Drive and, and the traffic that it carries. I just want to say that we meet all the setback requirements, I know there's been a question about the setback of the canopy and the, and the fueling stations, we meet all the setbacks, we've asked for no variances to that. I would note, just, there is a, there's a Wawa at the intersection of Pleasure House Road and Shore, just to our west, on the other side of North Hampton, and there, there is a house immediately adjacent to that, and I think if my measurements are correct, it's even closer than, than Ms. Jimenez', so this is certainly not a precedent setting. I know, I do a lot of 7-Elevens and others around the region, and I oftentimes see them adjacent to neighborhoods, and we, so we work really hard to try to make, make them compatible. Certainly understand Ms. Jimenez's opposition, we're sensitive to that, and we think that if, if you see fit to give 7-Eleven an approval tonight, that they, they will work very hard to be a good neighbor to not only Ms. Jimenez', but the, but the other neighbors to our east and to our south, and with that, I'll stand by the, for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Okay.
The next speaker is Julissa Jimenez. Ms. Jimenez, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julissa Jimenez Thompson. I am the owner of the house next to this development that they are planning to do, the gas station, and I just wanted to make sure that it's clear for everyone that I'm not opposed to doing any kind of development for the, for Virginia Beach. I am a happy resident of Virginia Beach for more than 13 years, and I just wanted to make sure that that is not the issue. What is the, what I'm concerned of is that this location is too close to my house. The health and well-being of my family is a priority, should be a priority for the city council. My mother is 87 years old. This gas station project will increase our exposure to pollution that may affect our breathing and overall health at our age. My husband has a heart condition and is on medication. He has been hospitalized twice due to breeding problems. This gas station poses a high risk to the medical improvement he have gained through the medical treatments and recommendations. My house is located less than 50 feet from this proposed gas, um, um, gas station, and would put my life and my family life in risk 24/7. Our recent ser, uh, our recent survey said a gas station should be at least 300 feet away from any home, schools, or daycares. Virginia gas station regulations, license, and permit should be revisited and updated following recent studies. I hear that they say that there was a, um, approval done in 1996, this is 25 years back. Today, it's, everything is different. We all lived 2020, it's different. We have to take care of the community health. I'm not only talking for myself, but I'm talking even for the Virginia Beach community. I want to implore each one of you to revisit what are the requirements to having a gas station close to our home. I sent you an email with information that I would like for you to review before approving this project. There's a link where I could show you, there was a explosion at a gas station in Virginia, here, yes, here in this state, Virginia. This is one, this was in 2019, this is one example, and many other that I could find, and I want to urge you to please do not approve this before you revisit what are the regulations in the distance of a house, a resident, where's elders, where's kids? I have my daughter, and I, when we plan to buy this house.
Very much, ma'am.
Thank you. The applicant, Mr. Palmer, if you would like to rebut for three minutes, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief. I, I certainly understand her concerns. I, I looked at her code sections, she cited a code section that, that, and I couldn't find it, but we, we certainly meet all the setback requirements. I, I measured it out from her house to the canopies is, is a little over 100 feet. That's not unusual, I know the, the Wawa at Pleasure House and Shore Drive is about 80 feet. So, and I know around the region, there, there are many, many examples of, of 7-Elevens and Wawas being in close proximity to residential homes, and, you know, really, the, the issue comes down to just buffering it, doing attractive landscaping, fencing, and, you know, in good, in good site design, and I think we have all, all those in our favor on this to try to mitigate any impacts that, that they have. But, you know, I think more importantly, 7-Eleven is a trusted, is a trusted operator, and I, and I know that, you know, if this is approved, that, that they will work hard to be a good neighbor.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, at this point, Mr. Jones, discussion, and do you have a motion?
Sorry, Councilmember Jones.
Yes, I do. I've, I've looked at this property, frankly, what's on it now is an eyesore to the community, and, you know, I welcome the opportunity to, to get this property cleaned up. I think the development that, that is being proposed is going to be a major improvement, not only to the property, but to that, that intersection right there. I think a valid point is the fact that there was, there's already, already a, a conditional use permit on this property in 1996 for a gas station, and so the idea that there can't be a gas station on it is, is, is not realistic, but more importantly, it's a major improvement to that, to that area, and I just can't find a reason to be opposed to it, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Shouldn't we approve, do we have a second?
Councilmember Abbott.
I have a question for staff, if I can ask.
We need to get a second first, and then.
We got to get a second first, yeah, Ms. Abbott.
Councilmember Moss.
I'll second that application, there's a couple 7-Elevens that are entrance to our neighborhood, and they are well-maintained properties.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
Thank you. I, just for future reference, for staff, I have a question about what is the guideline that we have to follow with proximity to resident, residential homes and these gas stations? I couldn't find that in the write-up, and I was just curious, because it, you know, I, I, I used Google Maps to map several of them, and it does seem like there are a few in this area that are about the same distance from this house and, and the proposed development, but I'm just curious, what is, what is the minimum setback for these?
Mr. Tahan.
Councilmember Abbott, so the minimum setback between residential and, I'm going to pull it up, I'm sorry. As, as far as the actual building itself, there's a requirement for a landscape buffer in order to buffer the commercial uses. This applicant shows that with a 15-foot landscape buffer, which I believe is a category 6 landscape buffer. I do have to pull up the actual ordinance for business districts and their side setbacks, so I apologize for the delay. The setback to the building is required to be, I'll see what's on the lot. It's 15-foot minimum, so that is setback that they have provided for, and that is a requirement for commercial uses along the, adjacent to residential uses. As far as gas stations themselves, there aren't a specific extra additional setbacks, but as the applicant had noted, from the property line, it is approximately 72 feet to the canopy itself, and to the existing residence, it's over 100 feet based on my measurements as well.
Thank, thank you.
Councilmember Abbott, did you have any additional questions or comments?
I have no other questions, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments or discussion from council members, if so, please raise your virtual hand. None, mayor.
Okay, thank you, and I'd, and I'd like to just inform the, the neighbor, you know, that spoke in opposition, you know, throughout, throughout the years, we have put gas stations close to homes, and that, you know, when I was the Centerville rep, we had this case also, and we were given assurances by the fire department and a number of other folks, engineers, that the technology they, they use now with gas tanks and everything with prevention and safety is really paramount, and I'm sure that, you know, if we do pass this, they will turn out to be a good, convenient neighbor for you. With that being said, Madam Clerk, could we do the vote?
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Moss. Councilmember Rouse. Councilmember Tower. Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the application of Verdad Real Estate and Construction.
Okay, thank you. At this point, is there any unfinished business?
Councilmember Wooton, you're unmuted.
Yes, I, I do have some unfinished business. I actually want to address your comments, mayor, that you made during the workshop earlier today when I submitted the resolution about the small initiative for Virginia Beach. You know, it, it's not too long ago that you sat in my seat as a council member, and you had, you've worked on issues with the small business community, and I dare say that you were responded to in such a manner when you brought up initiatives. were responded to in such a manner when you brought up initiatives. And, you know, I have to say that it was something that I was very surprised by, and it's unacceptable, what you said to me and how you said it. I want to make sure that you know that it was very disturbing, your comments and your tone. All that I was trying to do was advocate for small businesses, and the response that I received from you was totally out of line. I felt attacked, and I felt that my efforts to address the small business community with the resolution and advocating for them, I felt that those efforts were trivialized by such comments that you made to me stating that it was micromanagement, I was getting involved with his staff, which, those are things that I have never done. Those are accusations that I don't appreciate, and I'm a bit surprised that you would do something in that nature when I come forward with a resolution to address small businesses. Now, you know, I thought that I was in an, in an environment that was, where we could collaborate and work together on issues, you know, but the comments that you made made this environment volatile and very hostile. And it was not the first time that you've done that before to me, that you've spoken in such a manner. And, you know, at this point, you know, I feel that it has to be addressed, and it has to be changed. I don't know if you feel comfortable addressing me that way because I'm a woman. I don't understand what the situation is, but I will tell you, it's unacceptable, and I don't appreciate it. And so going forward, we always talk about having decorum in our city council meetings, but that rule of decorum should apply to council members and colleagues as well. And so I welcome a discussion with you, addressing this issue, and also addressing it at our upcoming retreat. But I want you to know in no uncertain terms that what you said and how you said that to me today is unacceptable, and I won't stand for it.
Thank you very much for your comment, but once again, I think, and we're in a very tough time right now, and let me just say, I have an opinion, and I try to give it in a respectful way. And maybe it didn't come across that way, but I feel, as mayor, I have an obligation to defend my city manager and the staff for what they're doing, and I have 100% confidence that between the Minority Business Council and the efforts that have been going on, and I just quite frankly have a problem when resolutions come forward, given to what I consider explicit directions. We are, I have a definition of a council manager form of government, and I just didn't think it was an appropriate thing. But yes, you and I will definitely be talking about this in a very most respectful and cordial way. Anyone else? Who's that?
Councilmember Wooton?
Okay.
You're unmuted.
Now, I appreciate those comments, but again, it's not always what you say is how you say it. And so again, I welcome the communication and discussion with you because it can't happen again.
Any additional, any additional questions or comments or old business? Seeing no one's virtual hand raised, mayor?
Okay, is there any new business?
No one's raised their virtual hand.
Okay, thank you all very much for a very productive meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you.